You're talking about.
Here, it's jam, jam, it's actually. I'll help them. Then you have half of them. Yeah, I forgot that, I'm sorry. It's 22. I don't know how, do you have any idea how many signed up? I don't, I don't mind.
Calling all Aldermen, could we get started, please?
May I make an admonition on the seating?
What?
May I make an admonition on the seating?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you're in the council chambers, you need to have a seat unless you're working press, so please grab a seat or be out in the empty room, or we have two overflow seating areas down the hall. Thank you.
Sorry, city clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Grover. Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burris. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braythwaite. Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham. Nine zero.
We have a quorum, welcome to the Monday, July 22nd, 2013, meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item on the agenda is the mayor's public announcements. The ethnic arts festival was a great success, and I'd like to thank every, all the volunteers who helped to make it a success. Then I would like to address the Harley Clark issue for a minute on, on my own time. The simple fact of the matter is that blame me if you're concerned because there is a proposal before us. I did, as did someone else, want to find an adaptive reuse for the mansion, and suggested to Colonel Pritzker that he have a B and B there. And his proposal was not what I had anticipated, and I do not believe we should sell public land, nor do I believe that this council intends to sell public land. But the Colonel was responding to what his mayor asked him to do, and so I thank him for that. And Alderman Wilson, you have your light on. Oh, all right. Thank you. So, thank you for the yard signs, and thank you all for being here. It is heartening to know, first, that we have a council that I believe will not sell public land, and second, that we have a community that would not let us sell public land if we were going to sell public land. So, I love the yard signs, and I love you all for being here, and Alderman Wilson, take it away.
All right, and I'm understanding from your comments that we're taking special order of business, SP one.
We can take SP one if you want to make a specific motion, and everyone can still make public comments.
Thank you, I would like to make a motion. First of all, I do want to thank both Towani for their proposal, as well as the other groups who came in and responded to the initial request for information. We make progress through ideas, and it's important for the community and the public to present ideas to us, and to assist us in coming up with ways to improve the community and our facilities. And with that said, this particular proposal that's been submitted to us is not what I was looking for, and for a number of reasons, this particular park is important to me, it's important to my family, people that I know, but I guess the threshold question is, as the mayor's already indicated, it's a question of preserving a community asset and property of the city and the community. So my motion is to, with my thanks, of course, out there for the proposal, but I do move that we decline this proposal, and I'll have a second motion after that, but my initial motion is to decline this proposal that's been submitted by Towani.
I'll second.
Alderman Burris?
I just want to clarify your, your statement. So, the notion of public land, and you mean the parkland and the beach, but we're still in discussion about the building itself, and I think there's several people that are still interested in looking at an adaptive reuse and looking for proposals for an adapted My concern has always been that it's not an asset, it's a liability. It's a severely deteriorated building, it's an environmental hazard, it has mold, it has lead-based paint, it has asbestos, it has lead in the water throughout the coach house and the building, the main building. It has a roof that is minimum, would cost more to repair than the roof, this, this building cost to repair, which was well over a million dollars. It needs all-new windows, and on top of that, even if you did all of those things, what would you use it for that makes sense, and you want to spend $10 million to redo a building? So, I agree that the parkland should not be sold, I believe that the access to the lakefront remains, the beach, the proposal never talked about getting rid of access to the beach, or getting rid of, or selling any of the beachfront. Those were misrepresentations by many in this community, which were completely false, and they know it was false.
Please be quiet, please, come on.
And it's sad that someone who we asked to come forward has been demonized so inappropriately by this community, someone who's been a philanthropist, who cares about this community, wanted to do something nice, wanted to do something to restore a building historically, and so we need to look at the reuse of this building. The city cannot afford $10 million or more to do what here, what, don't we have almost $300 million in debt? Do we not have a huge crime problem that maybe many in the room don't appreciate or understand or are affected by? Or we have a youth problem with jobs? We need to look at what is best overall for the whole city, and not get caught up in anger and fury about one building. So, I agree again with the beach and the parkland not being sold, but we do need to look very constructively at what to do with the building, because it is a liability, not an asset.
Thank you, Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Alderman Wilson, for your motion, which I enthusiastically support. We've gotten a lot of emails and calls and communications over the last couple of weeks in connection with the Harley Clark Mansion, and some of the words used to describe the proposal, the one proposal that is the product of a two-year public process, were appalling, egregious, repulsive, ludicrous, un-American, unthinkable, shocking, I think those were related to the, what, the understanding about the proposed price, travesty, wrecking ball, selfish, insulting, might as well live in Skokie, cheapens the community, and blight. And I, and I suspect that a lot of that response was based upon some misleading information, and, and if I looked at some of those emails, it became clear that there was a misunderstanding about what this single, this particular proposal was for, when those emails suggested that we were selling off the beach, that it would limit access to those who can walk there or who are guests of a hotel, that there would be loss of public access to the beach, one couldn't imagine bringing family and beach equipment to an underground garage, I kind of agree, that this would be a sale for exclusive use, and the gardens and mansion would be unavailable to the public, that we were selling the lakefront, that a playground would be eliminated, that we would lose Lighthouse Beach, that we would lose control over public access to the beach, that we were moving the beach to a point further north, that we were needing to build a new beach. These are things that were in emails as part of this discussion, and I think, as, as one resident said, we've generated a lot of heat here, but not a lot of light, and I think we are all to blame for that. I regret that we didn't have a larger public meeting back when the presentation came out, so that we could understand the contours of it. I was also disturbed to the personal comments that were directed by email to me about the city council and about the Towani and Colonel Pritzker who have proposed this, and all I can say is that it's hard to find and see the wisdom and comments when they are embedded in civility, that it's really hard to get to those good nuggets of information when they are so clouded by personal invective and insult. Towani and Pritzker have shared an ambitious vision for this property, this setting, and without making a judgment on the proposal's merits, I think we can all agree that it is a stunning proposal, both in its size and conception. The emails and communications, I think, that got, I got a little more traction with me that I found, found helpful, were from residents who suggested that this was a distinctive venue, and we know that, who offered a few ideas about how to structure a proposal for this, or how we might fund it, who suggested, maybe there's another option, maybe I could volunteer, what do you need? Let's think creatively about this, let's imagine ways to repurpose that land, let's find a citizens committee to raise private money, let's create a private fund for this, let's create a great asset, so I like that one, let's create a great asset, let's build something from this, let's look to examples of adaptive reuse from outside Evanston, I think others have lessons for us in how to address a building like this. Let's think creatively, let's create value here, let's add to the park's appeal, it is a hidden gem, and I agree with that, it is almost too hidden, we don't get enough of our residents to this beach and to this landing, this lighthouse landing, to enjoy what we have there. And suggestions about how to restructure a proposal for an adaptive reuse that doesn't involve the sale of land, condoizing the building separate from the land. So, I'm, I am, I agree that we should politely decline this particular proposal because it's out of scale with the, with the site, but I think there are features of it that maybe we want to use. Other suggestions, things that, that I, that people told me they liked about this were, how about a protected venue for outdoor weddings? We don't have one right now at the lakefront. How about a cafe where in the morning you could get a cup of coffee, or in the afternoon you could get some iced tea, maybe even sandwiches at the lakefront, imagine that. How about a place where you could rent beach umbrellas? Again, I think we need to engage in a larger process to find what we want to do with this extraordinary asset and remarkable liability, city's liability, and I don't think that the answer is to position ourselves at the extremes, rather to try to find that middle ground where the good ideas dwell. And again, doing it with some civility and some patience with each other. So let's undertake a longer community conversation about what we want at the beach, and discover what our resources are to build something and create something there that more of us can use, please.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I just, what I want to do is echo Alderman Grover's comments, there certainly were a number of memorable pieces of correspondence that we all received. However, I'm going to qualify that with my observation that, for me, personally, the vast majority of the correspondence and the phone calls and the conversations that I had were quite constructive. People were upset, some were angry, but for the most part, they were far and away, they were very respectful, and I appreciate that. And whatever pros or cons, and apparently there are a number of cons with this process, the big pro here is that it mobilized a very large number of people who are very interested in the property, the process, and achieving some results. So along the lines with what Alderman Grover was suggesting, we should follow through with that, we should get these, these ideas on the table, this should be a public, public process, and we have amazing talent and resources in the city, so with this kind of mobilization, I can't imagine that we couldn't come up with something outstanding for this property.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to all of you who turned out tonight, it was really an amazing show of support for our, our lakefront and also our parkland. I, I want to remind the council, it's, it's very hard, you can't take this house off the parkland, this house, there's parkland underneath the house, what happens to the parkland, happens to the house, it's all part of the same parcel. Years ago, probably 40 years ago, if not longer than that, the city council made a decision to try to acquire more parkland, we're really park poor in Evanston, and so they acquired buildings like the Civic Center, for example, to get the park around the Civic Center, but they also acquired the Harley Clark Mansion, not for the house itself, but for the parkland and for the beach, the beachfront. So the house itself has always been a little bit of a problem, what are we going to do with it, who can we put in there? It was one of the reasons why we constructed the agreement with the Arts Center, which was, for a dollar a year, you take care of the inside of the house, we'll take care of the outside of the house. The city has never been real good at taking care of its, of its assets when it doesn't know what to do with them. I think we're turning that around, we're really looking at the buildings that we have and trying to make changes there, the Civic Center is a perfect example of that. I understand the frustration that you all have gone through, and to some extent, I've gone through that as well. I do think that we, as a council, need to look at our policy of not disclosing responses to requests for proposals. I think a lot of this, if you had had more information, that would have, that, it, it would have helped open up the dialogue a little bit more. In my ward, we talked about this for a long time, I ran opposed, so we had an opportunity to discuss this in a lot of different forums, other wards didn't quite handle it the same way, and that's up to their, their Alderman, I'm not saying that we did it any better in the first ward, but it's just that at every single ward meeting that we had, we discussed this. So folks in my ward, I was maybe a little bit more in sync with you than perhaps others had the opportunity to do. I can, I, I really also think that the city council and staff has to look at the problems inherent with this parcel in terms of rezoning, it's currently zoned OS for open space, there's a very limited number of things that we can do in open space, most of them are cultural organizations or institutions that we can put on those sites, but not, we can't think in big terms unless we're willing to change our zoning ordinance, and I'm very hesitant, we're opening up a big, a big box of unknown if we start, if we start going there. I certainly want to think creatively, and I think those of you who have been out in front of this issue have asked for nothing more than to expand the dialogue and to get together and communicate with your city government in terms of your vision for the, for the lakefront. But mostly you've wanted to keep this open, you've wanted to keep it free, I think you understand that, from what I've heard, that you really value trotting down to the beach and having it to be open and family-oriented, and rather than developed to a point where maybe you're not as, quite as comfortable going as you, as you would have been if it were just left as a wild, natural place. Last thing I want to mention is for the Lakefront Master Plan, we went through a two-year process, and that, the Lakefront Master Plan was adopted in 2008, and so many people participated, hundreds of people participated in that, and we came up with a concept for the Harley Clark Mansion that included sandwiches and lemonade and beach umbrellas and things like that, there's no reason that the city can't do that. But we are going to call on all of you to participate in this, thank you so much again for all of your hard work, yard signs were terrific, everyone who went door-to-door, folks in my ward who, this is our only beach, really, at the north end of the first ward, so it was very important to them, not just residents of the sixth and seventh ward, so thank you all and congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman Wynn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll be brief, I think most of what I wanted to say has already been said. I did want to say that I appreciated all the emails and messages that I received, I think most of them reflected a level of concern and intelligence and wanting to contribute that, that reflects the citizens of Evanston. I think many people were taken by surprise by this, and when you're taken by surprise at the removal of a beloved part of your city or the threat to that, people get angry, and, and that was reflected in a number of the emails, but mostly I received questions and concerns, so I, I very much appreciate that. I do think we need to find another use for this building, and I'll speak heresy here, if the choice is commercializing this building, then I would rather disassemble it, hold on to artifacts, hold on to the, the particular artifacts of it, turn those over to an artist and have them create an evocation of the building and what it once was, and, and then sell the valuable items for salvage. I've been to many places around the world where the original building isn't standing, but you still can feel the spirit of it and the essence of it, but it, so, to me... But it, so, to me, the choice of a restaurant or an event space, which brings everyone, look, just go around the back of any restaurant you've ever been to. Really. I mean, I think it would be lovely if we could have a restaurant, but you have to have the back of the restaurant, too. So, and I, you know, I, so to me, I would, I would consider that. I mean, I know that many of you think that's awful or potentially, I, I think we need to consider that because it will be difficult for us to find the appropriate dollars to, to restore the building. I hope we can. I think this community has the capability of doing that. But finding an appropriate use is, is really the key part of this. An appropriate use for, as Alderman Fisk says, open space. Open space is not commercial space. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Alderman Wynn's comments, except for the fact that I don't, would not like to see this beautiful building torn down. I mean, if we have, I don't see any reason why we should have to. If nothing else, when it does become to the point where we can't stand on it, it's on two legs, shutter it for a while and, as we work to find the resources to, to renovate it. But in my mind, there are also other considerations, too. We have, we have Noise Cultural Arts Center, which we know needs quite a bit of work to make it a more safe place. We have Channel Newburgh, we have Robert Crown. All these places, to me, take priority, priority over, you know, investment in Harley Clark. Once again, I don't want to see it torn down, but these other buildings that we own, we've not been good landlords. We've not taken care of them, and they are heavily used, heavily used, and I think certainly would take priority over pouring money into Harley Clark. That said, I wish we, I hope that the committee will get behind this and look at private funds, look at other alternative sources, and make this thing work. So, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no lights for further discussion, City Clerk, would you call the roll on Alderman Wilson's motion to, to decline the Tuani proposal?
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
No.
Alderman Burrus.
No.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
No.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Six to three.
Six to three. The motion passes.
I'd like to make a second motion. Perhaps it's a reference, but a move that we direct the city manager to reopen the process for finding a use for this building and the property that does not include the sale of public parkland.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct the city manager to look for an alternate use for the building that does not include the sale of parks, of parkland. City Manager, did you wish to speak to that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Alderman Wilson. It would be helpful to staff if that also included a direction to come back to the council with an evaluation of the building.
Definitely want to have an evaluation of the building, yes.
So, we could perhaps come back in, in sixty days, in September, with additional ideas plus that evaluation. I think the concern that we've had, there are health and safety issues with the building. We would like to get an updated evaluation of that, and we could bring both of those issues. I'd appreciate that being included.
I definitely would want to have that included in the request, so.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, my concern was that we take this step by step, and I'm a little bit uncomfortable with saying to the city manager here, go out and find another use for this, or something that might involve another RFP or something like that. I think we really need to take it step by step, keep in close contact with, so that people know when these meetings are going to be held, they can come and participate, citizen comment, but at least they will stay part of the process.
Yes, and actually, it's a question for Clerk Green. Clerk Green, when we did this RFP process, when we actually voted to go forward with the RFP, could, for our next meeting, could you actually give me the vote on how we voted to go forward with an RFP and, and the dates exactly of the introduction of that, as well as the action item for that? Because it was public, we talked about it, we voted on it. I believe it may have been a unanimous vote to go out for an RFP, or maybe, I'm sorry, could have been seven to two, to go out for an RFP, but I would like to actually, would you mind doing that for me? Thanks, I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If, if we could undertake as part of this public process, too, perhaps a series of community conversations of, maybe formalized around the Harley Clark Mansion, that could be facilitated by city staff, where we would provide this information to those who are interested about the building itself, about other options, and do a community brainstorming here.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson, your motion is before us with the direction to the city manager to pursue alternate use that does not include the sale of parkland. Seeing no further lights, City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero. The motion passes. Thank you. Alderman Tendem, did you want to report on the arts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're going to get citizen comment. This is, this is going to take two minutes, and then we're having citizen comment, and you're, you're on the top of the list.
I will make this brief. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will make this brief. I, I spoke two, two weeks ago about the, the, my, my desire to put our efforts behind a downtown theater building or performing arts building and sort of change the direction with, that we've been working on, with Piven expanding at the Noise Cultural Arts Center. I think that's a, a goal that the community can get behind. I think it, it speaks to the future of the arts in Evanston. In the past two weeks, I've talked to numerous organizations, Evanston Community Foundation, Evan Starts, Chamber of Commerce, the executive directors and some board presidents of each, of several theaters. Downtown Evanston, our elected officials, Daniel Biss, Robin Gabel, Jan Schakowsky, Larry Suffernan. Everyone I speak to has wide support for this. You know, they, we don't really, at this point, have specifics, but everyone is thinking. Everyone I talk to has different ideas, different directions, but all equal something kind of special downtown Evanston, very special, actually. So, I think that's, you know, I, I've had a good couple of weeks. You know, it's been busy, but, you know, I think the, I shouldn't be amazed, but actually was still amazed at the outpouring of support, and even unsolicited, numerous, I mean, twenty, thirty, forty emails just from people that heard about it and wanted to give their advice, wanted to participate in the process, wanted to make this thing work. So, I really appreciate the public and corporate and organizational support. I see the city of Evanston being the catalyst in this. I think the process will be driven by the theaters that partake in this. I don't think this should be a tax burden on the, on the residents of Evanston, and I see that, I think we have the components and different organizations that can make this happen, and look forward to working more on it. We will not, I have much more of an announcement today, but I, I know that people are waiting to hear more, get more news, but it'll be forthcoming. So, thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, do you have public announcements?
No, ma'am.
City Clerk, do you have communications?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. I have, before we get to the consent agenda, I want to make a change to the minutes on the P nine, which stated ordinance sixty zero three thirteen, grant a special use of bed and breakfast. In the part for comments on what was done, it's been changed. If we went back and listened to the tape, the change would be that Alderman Burrus amended the, no, Alderman Wynn motion for approval of it and was seconded. The change would be that Alderman Burrus amended the motion to strike section three B, it was seconded. Then Alderman Rainey amended the motion to allow a three-month period with the addition of deciding after a period is over, then come back and decide on the future removal. It was unanimous voice vote for the garbage removal, and then the original vote was then voted on with a roll call vote of seven to zero with Alderman Fisk and Wynn voting nay. Just want to put that in so that when you come to the minutes, you can go to approve with the, with the amendment.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Clerk Green, just to clarify, the changes to our minutes from the July eighth meeting are on page sixty-three of our packet, and it would be under for action. It was just a matter of not recording the roll call vote on that agenda item. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. Next is citizen comment. We have sixty-three people signed up to speak, and we have forty-five minutes in which this is supposed to be done. So, we do have a problem. What I am going to suggest never works, but I'm going to suggest it anyway. Please, if a previous speaker has said what you believe and what you came here to say, you could just say that you agree with the previous speakers and sit down, and that would be tremendously helpful. Or a group of you could get together, if you're all here to say the same thing, and one of you could speak for the group. That being said, we'll do the best we can with forty-five seconds per speaker unless there is some cooperation and people say, I agree with the previous speaker, then we'll be able to give people more time. So, I'm going to call the first four names and ask you to come up and speak. Alderman Fisk.
Madam Mayor, I, I believe there will be a number of people who elect to either not speak or to pass their time to someone else, and I would request that we give everyone the minimum of one minute.
I think you could be right. It's never happened before, but it could happen tonight. There could be a miracle. All right. I'm going to take a leap of faith and see what happens, but it's not going to be fair to the group in the middle and at the end if, if people don't agree with the previous speaker, if indeed you do agree. I'm going to call the first four names, Sharon Eckerstall, Gerald Adler, Mike Hartnett, and John Walsh. Please give your name and address.
Sharon Eckerstall, twenty-five nineteen Ashland. I do have a question to the clerk. I thought SP one could not be voted by Alderman Tendem since he had a direct relationship with Pritzker, with his campaign. Now, can you clarify that?
There is, as far as I know, no reason that Alderman Tendem cannot vote.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to clarify, I thought I had heard he couldn't. Okay, I'm here to address the NOVAC efficiency report for the township that was done about three or four months ago. On page ten of the report under the assessor's office, it says, quote, "These specific services do not easily align with traditional city services, and as such, there is not an immediate opportunity within city government where they could be effectively absorbed. Also, both governments perform distinct and non-overlapping public functions." Why then do you think the township needs to be abolished when it is saying in the report, if you read between the lines, that it really shouldn't be? They have no way of coping with it in the city. So, I would hope you'd consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gerald Adler, twenty-two thirty-five Wesley, sixty-year residence. This was written before the other thing. The main argument for the motel, the hotel, was a need for revenue, but the need for additional revenue has never been met by this council. You have home rule powers to create new taxes. Here are my suggestions. A small sales tax on all services, beauty shops, barber shops, and shoe side, I mean, shoe repair. A beverage tax on all sugar soft tricks. A small transaction tax on legal documents, such as leases, et cetera. A one percent city wage tax on all who work in Evanston, including public employees, which I was one in Chicago, and would have paid a city income tax to support my fellow speakers.
Mr. Adler, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay, I have one more question. I want a white paper of what your home rule powers are, of what taxes you have in option. I have never seen it in forty years in this city.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Adler.
Have you, do you, who is responsible? I cannot ask for it. The city manager, or you could ask for it. A white paper of what you could tax.
Mr. Adler, there are a lot of speakers. Please.
I agree, but I think mine is very relevant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. Mike Hartnett, twenty-two fourteen Hartsell Street. I had some lovely comments, the high point of which was going to be a nice quote from Hollis Stegner. I'll spare that. I just want to thank Alderman Wilson for the motion and thank the board for the, or the council, rather, for the decision, and I look forward to a fruitful community involvement process regarding the park, the Lakefront Park and the Harley Clark Mansion that will have a happy ending. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm John Walsh, twenty-seven thirty-six Hartsell Street, and members of the council. I am the president of the Central Street Neighbors Association. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Central Street Neighbors Association. In light of Alderman Wilson's motion, which has been unanimously adopted, I've amended my comments tremendously. The one that I, I do want to follow up on, I was going to read a resolution adopted on July tenth by our board of directors. I see City Clerk Green is holding a copy in his hand. We sent it to the city clerk, we sent it to each of the aldermen, we sent it to your honor, Madam Mayor. The one point that I want to reiterate, and I agree with Alderman Grover, that we are all a little bit responsible for, I won't use the word blame, but I'll say responsible for the misinformation that came out of this. What I want to reiterate is we, as the board of Central Street Neighbors.
John, I'm so sorry, your minute's up.
Call for a transparent process, and I will, I will be very quick. I don't think this process was transparent. Alderman Burrus asked what had happened at the beginning. The RFP was very limited in scope. What came back was a request for purchase of two times.
I'm sorry, you really do need to wrap up. Alderman Fisk, your miracle is not occurring.
Your Honor, I think there'll be many behind me who'd give up their time.
I hope so.
Transparent process is what we all look forward to joining, and thank you.
Thank you. The next four are Judy Pogozzi, Susan Aaron, Lawrence Aaron, and Anna Roosevelt.
I'm Judy Pogozzi. I live at seven oh four Trinity Court, and I'm hopelessly confused. I talked to my own alderman, I talked to several others who were so enthusiastic about this process, but I'm really glad, I mean, about this project, I'm really glad for your change of mind and heart because this community would not stand for that development. I want to suggest that I think it would make a great house for the president of Northwestern University, and that would indeed put his own house, where he lives now, back on our tax rolls, which would be absolutely delightful. I think it would be a great gesture on our part to give the university that house and tell them they have to follow all the rules to restore it and, and present it for the president. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Aaron. I live at twenty-five twenty Sheridan Road, and I actually, I'm, I'm just delighted and thrilled, as is, I know the spirit of Daniel Burnham, who was an Evanston resident and who cared deeply about the parks and, and the lake, Lake Michigan, and traveled to Berlin and Vienna and Paris and came back to bring his wisdom from Europe to us for our parks. We need a process that will take a look at really terrific alternative uses for the, for this space. And there are some exciting examples around the country, as well as in our region. Ragdale, Wingspread, Yado in Saratoga Springs. We have a lot of brain power in, in this, in this community, and lots of us contributed to this book during the Burnham celebration year, and I know are interested in participating in this process. Now, Madam Chairman, I'd like to leave this with you. You'll find many interesting and notable names that you know. We care so deeply, and God bless you.
Please leave it on your minute's up.
Daniel Burnham is so pleased. Daniel Burnham is so pleased.
I'm Lawrence Aaron, 2520 Sheridan Road. I will make my comment as briefly, as brief as possible. I was terribly concerned about the transparency of the process. You have a list of names of people who showed up here this evening. I would certainly hope that the next set of hearings, we are all noticed on the occurrence of those meetings. A considerable amount of the heat that was mentioned from the emails came from the fact that people were either uninformed or misinformed. So, I respectfully ask that there be a better effort to inform the populace of that.
I think that's a good request, but we only have a list, as far as I know, of the people who signed up to speak. So, if you didn't sign up to speak, we don't have your name, but you could let us have it, and then we would be able to keep you informed.
Well, perhaps people could email their request to the city, asking to be informed.
They could always email the mayor.
Yeah. Send in an email to the mayor or the city manager.
Or sign up for our e-news. We already have 27,000 Evanston residents who receive it every week, so it would be helpful.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk, we need to get through this.
I'm just hopeful, as the process goes on, and our next step will be to establish a page on the city website that people can sign up for, and that will be kept up to date all the time.
And we've had a page on the website for over a year, so.
Right. But, next steps.
Thank you. Okay.
My name is Anna Roosevelt. I live at 1028 Judson. I was very happy to hear Daniel Burnham's name, because he put my bathrooms in. My house has asbestos, lead, leaking roof, and all the items mentioned earlier, and so, of course, do the houses of many residents in Evanston, and we handle it. I would like to thank the city council. We are so grateful for your recommitment or statement of commitment to the principle of the preservation and augmentation of public resources like parks, park facilities, and buildings for general public use and not for alienation to private entities, especially not for totally inadequate prices. But 20 million would not be enough. Buildings of the era involved actually are much sturdier than many recent buildings, despite their defects that were mentioned. So, I myself, being an old building buff, would be happy to see the building developed into a public amenity. But regardless, my feeling about these developments in the park are that they should be directed to the increase of the quality of the experience of the parkgoers. And so, it could be food. It could be many, many things. I'm sure there'll be lots of good suggestions. I hope that the park original master plan will be looked at very carefully. And so, I have to say, this was a very wonderful experience for me.
I apologize, but your minute is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers are Camille Blackowitz, Paul Modesi, and Kate Zilla, and Bruce Enninback. Okay?
I just found out we have more than 63 speakers.
Camille Blackowitz, 806 Colfax. My friend is timing me. Honorable elected representatives, you asked for names, so today we are submitting to the city clerk petitions collected by noparksale.org volunteers and signed by 2,441 Evanston concerned citizens, representing every ward in the city, as well as over 1,000 Facebook and media followers. They are overwhelmingly against any sale of public parkland or privatization of the buildings that sit upon it. We recognize your desire to serve your public in ways that reflect the values of the community, as well as the plan of former resident Daniel Burnham to keep our lakeshore and all of our parkland free, forever free and clear, and under public, not private, ownership. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Paul McDessey from 807 Davis Street. I was involved in a, I applaud the council on its decision tonight. I was involved in a group over the last year that was in the village of Willmett that saved the property there, Elmwood Beach, that was also very similarly being considered for sale, public lands for sale along the beach to private ownership to the adjoining neighbors. Our group was able to turn public opinion 180 degrees and the village board's opinion 180 degrees away from the sale to keeping that in public hands and to restore the property. It took some effort, but I would suggest that, you know, putting this towards a committee structure is probably potentially a very effective way for you to deal with issues. That's one thing. One other thing, I think it's clearly you've listened to the opinions of the residents, which is obviously great. I think making sure that you really take full note of the full talents of all these committed citizens to get to a good position on this ultimately. So, well done.
Your minute's up. Thank you. Kate Zilla. I'm sorry. Bruce, go right ahead. If anyone is in the other rooms and wants to speak and hears their name and comes and has missed your turn, just wave at me, and you will be called on to speak. Go ahead, Bruce.
Thank you. Bruce Enninback, 35-year resident of the 7th Ward, now a proud resident of the 1st and Best Ward. I want to thank the council tonight for acting. I thank Judy particularly, Mr. Wilson, and all of those who supported this process. I was going to talk about all the master plans and studies that we've done since 1917, all of which recommended that we savor our parklands and save it and never give it up. So, thank you very much. It's a lot shorter than I was going to talk.
Thank you. It's great that it was shorter.
Like, less than one minute.
Excellent speech. Andrew Kniffin, Angela Marco, Ellen Alexander, and Mary Rosensky.
Hello, council. My name is Andrew Kniffin, 147 Callan Avenue, Unit 2. Grew up in Evanston and have been a homeowner for eight years. I applaud you on your decision to decline the Tuwani proposal. I would like to just mention that I think that I agree with the gentleman who spoke before, that a special committee could be well-served. One of the issues that has been spoken about a lot is the lack of transparency in these discussions, and a special committee that included some citizens would allow all discussions and thoughts to be very transparent. So, if you would please consider that, I think that'd be a great idea.
I don't know where everyone else is, but I'm Mary Rosensky. I live at 1729 Chancellor. I'll try to make this brief. My concern was I was at the Parks and Border Recreation Meeting on June 27th, and on that agenda was the need for more parkland in this community and the need to get people and the kids off the streets and get them back to the beach, and what we could do to have passive use there. And no one, and it's on the tape, when Lou Harms got up to speak and say, "Please don't sell our parkland," the person sitting next to the president said, "What's he talking about? Two and a half acres?" And after the meeting, I talked to a number of them. Some of them were aware that there was an RFP out for the mansion. Not one of them knew that there was two and a half acres of parkland at play. And so, Colleen, I'd just like to clarify that one thing, that the RFP was 37,000 square feet. I don't think anyone in this community even could comprehend that we would sell two and a half acres of our parkland. And the only, thank you. The last thing I'd say, just have faith in the people of Evanston. There's a tremendous amount of cultural and ingenuity and capital in this town. They came together for the libraries. I truly believe they will come together to save our parks. Thank you.
Very. Thank you. Ellen Alexander or Angela Marco are either.
Good morning, good afternoon, good evening, I think. Ellen Alexander, once upon a time, many, many years ago, city attorney. I was going to discuss with you, and I'm going to just abbreviate it very quickly, the concept of public trust, and that is the property belonging to the citizenry and to the municipality that's used for the benefit of its citizens is not to be sold. I was going to give you some nice legal citations, because the case that started this was an Illinois case in 1892. It's still being cited. It's been repeated and looked at and looked at. So, I want to thank you for perhaps knowingly or instinctively considering the public trust of that property. I want to add also that it was never about the beach. It was never a question of misinformation. What I found when I went around was that nobody knew about it, period, or they knew something very, very vague. It was not, of course, about the beach, and it was not about whether there would be a stairway to the beach. It was about the property, the land. And I thank you so much for changing your positions. If I understand, from the future, we're going to have a joint operation or a joint consultation, which should be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. The next Barbara Janes, Corinne Peterson, Linda Damaschek, and Jerry Woods. You are all welcome to follow Alderman Fisk's wishes and--
And I basically will, because most of my points have been made, but I just want to remind the council that the land that the mansion sits on is part of the public parkland. And we thank, I thank you, we thank you, noparksale.org, for declining to proceed with your negotiations, and we will work to find a proper use for the mansion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Corinne Peterson from 828 Colfax Street in Evanston, and also, my point has been made. Wanted to just say that I moved from Chicago about seven years ago, and there's a more active community process there for the Chicago Park System, and also to say that I applaud Alderman Fisk for staying in great communication with the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Damaschek, Jerry Woods, Eve Epstein, and Judith Ramey.
Good evening. I'll be briefer than what I was planning to say. The very full diversity of Evanston, all ages, races, ethnicities, socioeconomic groups, and wards, who are so concerned about the proposal, thank you very much for your vote tonight. And we know that when you value something, you find a way to support it, and so I'm really glad that there's been a lot of discussion about working together in the future to figure that out. There are so many realistic options to explore. Some suggestions I have is looking at the Grove in Glenview or the South Shore Cultural Center in Chicago as models for what we can create together at the Harley Clark Mansion. So, thank you very much for your vote tonight.
Thank you.
Jerry Woods, 847 Judson, Evanston. I just want to say, I think a new spirit of trust and a beginning of a sense of cooperation has been established here tonight, and I think it's wonderful. I think prior to that, we had a lot of miscommunication, mistrust. Things weren't clear. I think it has been cleared up tonight. I think we can now go forward in the spirit of Daniel Burnham, in the spirit of the studies for parks, the most recent one, 2008, and I think in the spirit, too, of the council now having listened to the will of the people, and I see nothing but good coming out of this. Thank you very much.
Eve Epstein, 805 Clinton Place. I have lived in Evanston for 38 years. I want to thank the council for declining to go forward with the Tuwani proposal. I'm here tonight to let you know that we who have organized to oppose the Tuwani proposal are here for the long haul. We were not just here to say no. We are not here merely as naysayers. We are here to work with you, to partner with you, and all Evanstonians. We see this as our responsibility to be good stewards of this great public treasure, which benefits not only Evanston but all of the surrounding communities as well. We're asking that you work with us to come up with viable options to keep this invaluable and irreplaceable public space and the Harley Clark Mansion in the hands of the public and this community. People who are interested in working with us should contact info@noparksale.org. Thank you.
Judith Ramey, 616 Hinman Avenue. I'm here representing the Southeast Evanston Association. I will not read the letter that we sent to you earlier today, and I would like to reiterate particularly what the last two speakers said. In some ways, I also appreciate that you have withdrawn consideration of the Tuwani proposal. I should say "we." I do, I'm sorry in some ways that it took all of this to get us to this point, but it seems to be a good point to come to, and I do, it shows the strength of Evanston citizen power, and with the help of Evanston elected officials' power, yes, we can find answers to such problems as the Harley Clark Mansion and that property has posed for all of us in the city. So, once again, thank you. Yes, process is important.
Sorry. Your minute's up.
I think this proves that the Southeast Evanston Association stands ready to be a part of this process.
Thank you. Patricia Atkins. That was Junad Rizki. I apologize. I'm having real trouble with this name. It might be Lou Hon--
Lou Harms. He just gave me his minute of time.
You gave me your minute, right?
Yes. So, I have two minutes. Thank you. The entire premise of this sale was based on a misconception, and that was the mansion needs millions of dollars of repairs. A council member tonight stated $10 million. I FOIA'd the city of Evanston. City of Evanston produced one document for $400,000 for exterior repairs, and there's the other document on the website. So, I don't know where the council, it talks about all the bunny for this building, but we need to produce some documents. So, that being said, let's move on. The other thing, a lease is a sale. This council leased land to Northwestern University, essentially sold it, and that happened. So, we're not, I would say, we're not really interested in leases. You know, the other thing that I FOIA'd the city on was the fact of the use of the beach and the whole thing there. There are 44,000 beach users. There's probably hundreds of children using camps there. There's campfires that have thousands, probably 2,000 residents use it. The picnic shelter has almost 3,000 residents using it. So, all these uses had to be considered when you look at the building, and none of that was looked at. So, I frankly think if we're going to look at this, you had to look at all that, and you didn't do that. You just neglected that the first time. So, if you're going to use this building, it really should be used for community use and not a use, really, to be leased for a restaurant or something. Thank you.
Una Malkinson, Angie Bryce, Gary Brown, and Bill Bax.
I'm Gary Brown, 2741 Simpson, 36-year resident. First off, I want to thank you all for all your participation in this process and the decision you took tonight. We are ready to help you and to become a part of transforming the park and the building into something that we can all use, and we look forward to working with you in committee, advising, supporting, bringing new ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Bax. Nope. Doris Brown, Jack Lerman, David Leitschuf, and Alice Egley. I think it's Doris Brown, 2741 Simpson. You're not going to, bless you. Thank you. I'm sorry, Jack.
I'm Jack, but I want to talk about--
Yeah, you can talk now. Please, talk now. Whatever-- Whatever the subject. This, to be clear, is people who've signed up for any public comment on any topic.
Last...
And I'm sorry, but you only get a minute, even though it's a different topic.
No, I'm not going to. I'm just going to give you 50 more petitions signed to make it clear that we would like to see the Piven proposal cut down to fit all the needs of all the artists, the diversity of all the artists. So these are 50 more petitions. I have more coming, and that's all I'll say about it.
Thank you very much.[640.82][640.82](APPLAUSE). All right.
David Leitschuf, 621 Central Street. I just want to clarify one thing. My profession's risk management. The comment was made earlier that the building's, it's not an asset, it's a liability. Well, everything is, every asset is also a liability. This building is an asset, but it's also a liability exposure.
Shut, I don't want to hear that right now.
I'm sorry, but that's the reality. It's both. But, you know, it's a shame that the building's as deteriorated as it has become. It's unfortunate it got to that point. But all we can do is look forward. I live three houses up off Central, and by the way, I'm Martin Shapiro's next-door neighbor. I don't think you'd like that comment about moving over there. But anyway, I just want to say that I moved in from out of state about six years ago, and I love this community, and my neighborhood is just a gem, and I would hate to see any commercialization of my neighborhood and of the scenic parts of this community. So as we go forward, I beg you to avoid going in that direction. And I even have to say, I agree in the extreme with Alderman Fisk's comments, that if it absolutely came to the point where we could not do anything with it, I'd rather that it be dismantled and make maximum use of the grounds as opposed to selling it out to commercial interests. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.[732.41][732.41](APPLAUSE). Alice Egley, David Burden, Ralph Zarumba, and Judith Ramey.
David Burden, 1619 Lincoln, 45 years in the city. Thank you, Mr. Alderman, Alderman Wilson. I'd have to sell my house if this went through. I'm suppressing a, oh, sort of a nostalgia. I sat in those seats 35 years ago, and so I can sympathize with what you're struggling with, the process and the people. Back when I was in Alderman, Alderman Ramey was an organizer for TOE. She's still in public service. I'd like to pick up on two comments that Alderman Grover made, whether or not the Home Rule Powers would permit you to create a special taxing district for those who'd be interested in trying to support the Harley-Clark proposal, or like Emmanuel is doing, seeking public and private partnerships to be able to accomplish the goals that the municipalities just simply don't have the money for. Thank you.
Thank you.[810.63][810.63](APPLAUSE). Ralph Zarumba, Judith Ramey, John Agnew, and Mary Singh. She already did.
I agree with my Alderman, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate the way you run the office.
Thank you. Excellent speech.[836.54][836.54](LAUGHTER).
She can have three minutes.
(LAUGHTER) Please, she's doing very well. John Agnew, no. Okay. Alderman Fisk, you may be right. Bennett Johnson, Joe Baileys, Bill Schwimmer, and Wendell Thomas.
Bennett Johnson, 708 Washington Street. I come to you from a different perspective. I've been in Evanston a little over 80 years, and I used to live at 570 Milburn. 570 Milburn is the adjacent property across the street from the Harley-Clark Mansion. So I understand the need to keep the beach as part of the city asset as well as the building. There are a lot of ways to do it. The land can still be owned by the city, and the building can be privatized or leased out or handled in another way. The other important thing is that the transparency issue is really critical. What we saw tonight is what Carl Sandberg called "the people yes." When the people decide to move, everybody moves. Often, when you sit up there, you fail to realize that you don't own that seat. You represent people who put you there, and you forget sometimes[935.93][935.93](APPLAUSE). your responsibility to them, and I think you've seen tonight an example of why you own that seat for the people, not for yourself. A side comment on the matter of the North Shore Hotel, which my aunt worked at for all of her life.
Bennett, I'm sorry, I need you to wrap up.
I'm wrapping up.
Okay.
There's a need to keep it affordable. If the developers proposed 10%, the numbers work. You're not doing them a favor. You're doing yourself a favor by excluding poor seniors like myself, who also happen to be African-American. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[980.76][980.76](APPLAUSE).
Good evening. My name is Wendell Thomas, and I'm a resident, 547 Judson. I live in Melissa Wins Ward, and I had two points I wanted to make, the second of which has been moot. Thank you. And the first is a thank you publicly to Melissa for the years of service that she has afforded our ward. She has been devoted, and I think is the definition of public service, and I think the people in the ward remain constantly appreciative, and thank you very much.
Thank you.[1029.66][1029.66](APPLAUSE).
Hi. My name is Bill Schwimmer. I live in the 4th Ward. I want to start by just addressing Alderman, or Alderperson Burris. As someone who's lived their entire adult life in the 9th and 4th Wards, and I just had a child who graduated from Evanston High School, I can tell you, I'm keenly aware of all the problems in Evanston. But when it comes to lakefront, it's not just an issue of the affluent, it's not just an issue of the people who live along the lake, it's a citywide issue, and when things come up regarding lakefront, they need to be addressed. And so while we have other issues to solve, this is an important one to Evanston residents. And so I'm very happy that the city has decided to table this current proposal, but I'm still troubled by the fact that it got this far. And so as a couple of the other people have mentioned, you know, we do have a strategic plan that calls for the lakefront to be maintained as a natural environment with priority put on passive recreational use. We also have a regional-wide principle that the lakefront is to be kept free and open, clear of commercial development and for public use. And so in anything going forward on the lakefront, I hope people keep that in mind, and let's keep it free and clear, absent commercial use and for public.
I'm sorry, your minute's up. Thank you.[1107.15][1107.15](APPLAUSE). Next is Jeff Smith, Mike Lor, Sigrid Pilgrim, and Bonnie Ford.
The ideal process here would have been to first figure out what the people of Evanston want, and then try and find a way to get that done. Instead, we reverted to a process familiar before many of you joined the council whereby a developer proposes and the citizenry opposes. I'm sorry if Mr. Pritzker was placed in that too-familiar paradigm. My remarks are not to push anyone away from the table, but to reset the table so that more people are invited to have seats there. And the reason for that is because for too many people in this room and outside this room, this mansion is the only part of a mansion, or the only piece of a mansion they may ever own. So in an America where more and more is owned by the very few, government, especially in places like this, has a duty to safeguard and preserve the commons for the public. If you follow that process[1181.08][1181.08](APPLAUSE). if you follow that process here, I believe we'll come up with something that reflects both our values and this community's vision.
Thank you, Jeff.[1192.33][1192.33](APPLAUSE).
My name is Sigrid Pilgrim. I live at 2750 Bjornar Place, which is at the farthest corner of northwest Evanston. I'm submitting to you a copy of an email, which I have sent earlier in the day to Honorable Mayor, and also Mr. Bobkovitz, and to our elected Alderman. I won't read it except for one paragraph. If you were to go ahead with the sale of the mansion and the land, in my opinion, you would set a very, very poor precedent. What would prevent your successors from selling more lakefront property? Maybe to a five-star sit-down restaurant with a sunroof for four-season use at the lagoon? Valet parking? I'm conjecturing, but why not? Since if you're ready to sell lakefront property today, which in addition to the money that you would get from the sale, which is really a pittance, the long-range objective is to generate revenue, then why not sell more parkland if in the future you need more revenue? So let's not set a precedent, and I want to thank you very, very, very much for what you have just decided, namely not to sell the lakefront. Thank you.
Thank you.[1280.28][1280.28](APPLAUSE).
Mike Lor. I live at 726 Milburn Street in Evanston. I, too, I echo the comments of the prior speaker wholeheartedly. I, too, want to thank the council, Alderman Wilson, for the motion tonight. I thank the people of Evanston for showing up, and the scores and scores of people that showed up in support of stopping the sale of the Harley-Clark Mansion. And I invite the council to really partake in this deliberative process, this open process, open and transparent process with the citizens of Evanston. I think I speak for everybody who attended tonight. We're all game to participate and contribute while we can. But I really want to thank the council for its decision tonight. It's really, it's exceptional in my mind to see this sort of action out of the government this quickly. Thank you.
Thank you.[1334.21][1334.21](APPLAUSE). Bonnie Ford, Carl Bova, Lynn Height, Patrick Donnelly.
Carl Bova, 1322 Rosely Street. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for its action related to the mansion. First order of business is I recommend that the council have an open house at the mansion, and that's for the council as well as the citizens. I attended an event at the Grove in Glenview yesterday. The rental fee, $6,000. And that's a park in the middle of nowhere, bounded by the TOE road on one side, Lake Avenue, and Milwaukee Avenue. What can the mansion along Sheridan Road with the lakefront and the lighthouse bring in its fees? I suspect easily $600,000 to $1 million a year. If I take Alderman Burris's notion about $10 million of revenue, I'm looking at probably being able to generate at that size...
Paul, your minute is up, sorry.
It's fine. $2 million a year, and that could easily make up any revenue, any renovation cost. Thank you.
Thank you.[1437.71][1437.71](APPLAUSE).
Hi. I'm Patrick Donnelly. I live on Ridge. I just want to say, because no one said it, don't rip it down. I think, actually, this could be Evanston's greatest asset, not just a liability, but I think if you see the mansion through my eyes, because I've been poking around that place for eight years, I really think that there's huge potential, and maybe you all just need to be a little bit more re-energized with someone who can give you a proper tour and show you what it used to be, and then maybe come up with some creative ideas on what it could be. Thank you.
Thank you.[1475.71][1475.71](APPLAUSE). Gay Riceborough, whoever lives at 1933 West Estes, maybe Jackson, Adam King, and Lisa Foran. Gay, go ahead.
Gay Riceborough, 1801 Crane Street. I'm president of Grandmother Park Initiative, as you all know. We're here tonight to seek the go-ahead, to break ground. We are a private organization, and we've raised $270,000 for this park, which is going to be a new city park.
Watch out, they'll sign you up for the fundraising for Harley-Clark.
We've already been asked.[1524.41][1524.41](LAUGHTER). $67,000 of which is coming from the city of Evanston, for which we are very grateful. And I have to say that I was born and raised in Evanston, and the only person that's older than me here who's been in Evanston longer is Bennett Johnson. Anyway, we hope you give us permission to break ground tonight. We're thrilled with our progress, and we're tired. It's been five years.
Thank you, and congratulations.[1553.03][1553.03](APPLAUSE). M. Jackson, Adam King, Lisa... Yes.
Hello. I'm Michael Jackson. I teach at the Evanston Art Center. I've taught there for nearly 20 years. And no mention on Chicago tonight, last night, about the Evanston Art Center. Beaches, parkland, parcels, nothing about the 84-year-old Evanston Art Center, center of excellence, maybe just because I teach there. But anyway, there's crime in Evanston. Why doesn't Evanston citizenry sponsor a student to come learn art with me, and maybe we can help out? Don't neglect the arts. Forget about the massive profits of this, that, and the other. I know we're in the toilet in Evanston. I live in Chicago. But don't neglect the arts. Thank you.
Thank you.[1609.12][1609.12](APPLAUSE). Lisa Foran, Darushma Badi, Greg DiStefano, and Karen Friedman. You can put it in the minutes. All right. Cheryl Miller, Noreen Sherrod, Tom Payne, Dietmar Baum. Somebody's coming.
I'm Dietmar Baum from 822 Milburn Street. I thank you for the decision tonight, and I would want to reiterate that transparency and lack of information was key among many of the my neighbors I talked to. Like, I'm still confused, I mean, even following the news about so many things, like about different price tags that were mentioned, and from the $400,000 or $430,000 that I read in the Tribune, to the $10 million that were mentioned today. What is the number? Is there any official number on how much it would cost to restore this, to bring this up to code, to maintain this? How are we making decisions if we don't have those numbers in the first place? The other one is the secrecy, the perceived secrecy about the whole process with the notes of the minutes that were just accidentally destroyed. That just didn't look good. I mean, it was true or not, but it just didn't look good, given that also, like, somehow, like, the 37,000 square feet were changed into two and a half acres in the process. I mean, yes, you had an RFP, but like, if two and a half acres were for sale, probably a lot more people would have said, yeah, there's something I could do with that. And how can you go forward with negotiating price when the terms of an RFP were so tremendously changed? Thanks again for the decision tonight, and that's it.
Thank you.[1746.03][1746.03](APPLAUSE). Stuart Grill, Spencer Stern, Kiara Madden, Maggie Weiss.
Good evening. Stuart Grill, a 50-year homeowner of Evanston, presently residing at the Mather at 425 Davis Street. I originally came tonight to violently disagree with something that's already been settled. I'm very glad we don't have to change the seal above your head after 150 years. I am, for the sake of disclosure, for eight years I handled the Pritzker Real Estate, and that's a prelude to what I am about to say. I think a great disservice... I think a great disservice was done to James Pritzker and any developer, of which I have been for over 60 years, in replying to an RFB expending money and time on architects, engineers, et cetera, et cetera, in good faith. And I do think this council, one or two people alluded to this, owes anybody, especially Colonel Pritzker, an apology for replying to and being the only person who replied to this RFB in good faith. And I think in the future, this council should remember back to the '70s and '80s when I built some buildings in Evanston-
I'm sorry, your time's up.
Last comment, when the council and the administration invited developers and real estate people to come and participate in this process. You are overlooking a great amount of knowledge that this council does not have, as was evidenced in the RFB. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I have now called everyone. Is there anyone here?
Maggie Weiss.
Maggie Weiss. I called Maggie.
I thought there was someone in front of me.
Well, there is, but they're not showing up, so.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to say tonight, on behalf of the Noyes Tenants Association, that we all are very appreciative of your continued consideration for all the things going on at Noyes. I don't know if any of you are aware, but construction on the new roof, it begins tomorrow, and the scaffolding will be switched out and changed, and we're all incredibly grateful for that change in our building and the upkeep. And we look forward to finding a positive resolution for whatever is on the docket and working together and making best use of all the creative capital that we have in Evanston at Noyes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, is there anyone who wishes to speak who hasn't spoken? Going once, going twice, gone. Thank you all for coming. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent? Oh, we have another special order of business. Sorry about that. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. A number of months ago, the council asked that staff retain a consultant to do a management audit of the township of Evanston. We were able to retain Novak Consulting Group out of Cincinnati to do that. Julia Novak, the principal, is here. The report was made available to you some time ago. It's also the packet this evening. This engagement was completed in the spring, and we've been waiting for an opportunity to have Ms. Novak come and present her findings. So she's here this evening. Will give a brief overview of what she found and be available to answer any questions. Ms. Novak, good evening.
Thank you very much for having me here. My name is Julia Novak, and I'm happy to present the findings of our efficiency study of the township operations. Novak Consulting is a consulting firm comprised of local government, former local government officials and staff, and we work with cities, counties, townships, boroughs, and other single-purpose local governments all across the country. So it's a real pleasure to work here in Evanston. Tonight, what I'll do is very briefly, just kind of hit the highlights of what our goal was in doing this work, talk about our approach to the project, and hit the highlights of our findings and recommendations. So, the city of Evanston and Evanston Township, it's a unique situation, even in Illinois as a co-terminus township with a shared governing body. The question that we were asked to answer was, are there opportunities for the city and for the township to work more closely together to improve services, eliminate duplication, and gain efficiency? One of the things that we found when we started our work was that the city and the township had already been proactive in trying to identify opportunities to improve efficiency. And this fall, the township operations are going to be moving here to your civic center, and that will not only provide us savings in terms of rent and utilities, but it's also going to create some synergies that we believe you can take advantage of to reduce staffing and save additional monies.
Excuse me, Clerk Green has a question or a comment.
This is, this is, this action tonight is on here for action, is dealing with township business. The city council cannot deal with township business unless it breaks into the township trustee board. So I would ask that until you convene into the township as trustees, you cannot discuss this item. It's for action, it's not for introduction, it's for action.
And Madam Mayor, the action is just to receive. The city council contracted for this, the township board did die. So there's no action asked of the city council. The township board was previously scheduled to have a meeting this evening. Ms. Novak made her travel arrangements here, and rather than cost the taxpayers of Evanston additional dollars, we asked her to come this evening. There is no action, and Madam Mayor, if it would be appropriate, then at the conclusion of the report and questions, then we will move on to the next item.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, I don't know if there are new rules, but over the years, when a township issue came up, we were able to simply move into our position as township board members.
I don't believe there are any new rules.
I mean, if that's, if that's, I mean, I'll do whatever I'm told, but-
That will be novel, Alderman Rainey.
But we could, we can just revert to the township board.
Just make a motion?
That's what I did, yeah. I don't know if we have to or not, but-
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, again, we're trying to do this. The township board was going to meet. They were unable to have an agenda to present before you tonight. We're just trying to convey the information. The city council was the entity that contracted for this-
My client was the city of Evanston, right?
Yes, the client was the city of Evanston.
Then let's hear it.
And so let's, if we could just move forward.
Okay, could I just call on Alderman Holmes and Grover quickly?
Well, I was simply going to say that since the city, the Alderman did request the report, we just wanted to accept the report tonight, and then, I don't remember what date we're going to have for the regular township, but we would move into trustees to deal with any issues that we might have with the report.
And Alderman Holmes, I believe that-
And I'm the one that requested that it be taken off of the agenda for tonight, because they were not prepared. Simple as that.
It's fine.
And the reason there wasn't a township board meeting this evening.
Alderman Grover.
I'm agreeing with Alderman Holmes. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right. Sorry, please continue.
Okay. Well, one of the things that I wanted to point out was that our task was to look at efficiency, or the administration, or the implementation of the policy that you all, as both the city council and your ability to appropriate funds for the township and in your policymaking role as township board of trustees jointly with the elected supervisor and assessor, act upon. And so our job was to look at how efficiently those policies were being implemented in the town operations. In doing our work, we always begin with what I call a careful learning phase, where we want to understand, you know, what is done, why are things done the way they're done, and what works well for the staff in the organization. We interviewed each of the township employees, as well as the elected officials. We did some process mapping of the various processes specifically related to general assistance and emergency assistance, and we reviewed workload and performance data. We also talked to some of the department heads in the city of Evanston to, again, look for opportunity, at points of intersection between work that the city does and work that the township does. We interviewed the directors of the Department of Health, Community Development, Finance, Parks, and Recreation. We also conducted some benchmarking research. People always want to know, well, how do we stack up to others? We focused on the four townships that are here in Cook County, Mayne, Trier, Niles, and Oak Park. We also looked at the 20 co-terminus townships in the state of Illinois and paid special attention to those seven who share governing bodies. So through our persistence and some assistance from the township supervisor, and by scouring publicly available data, we did get sufficient information to inform our analysis and recommendations, although the townships were initially not forthcoming in wanting to share information for this work. With regard to the supervisor's office, just in general, the supervisor's office provides general assistance and emergency assistance. General assistance is compulsory, it's required by the state of Illinois. Emergency assistance is an additional service that you all have decided to appropriate funds for and provide to your vulnerable residents. The processes that they use adhere to the state's process. They use a software package called Visual GA very adeptly in terms of how they manage their work. Their staffing levels and caseload were consistent with what we saw in other townships, and we didn't have any indication that there was, that the staffing levels of the township supervisor's office were too high. The assessor's office, interestingly, as a matter of policy, again, provides a service that's not required, but is, again, a value-added service that you all have chosen to provide. Within Cook County, a unique quirk in Illinois, is that the Cook County assessor assesses property, and the rest of Illinois, the assessors assess property. But in Cook County, that is done through the county. And so what you all provide here is an advocacy service to help your residents interface with the Cook County assessor's office. They maintain exhort staff level who provide assistance in kind of wandering through the process of appealing assessments and understanding different exemptions that folks are eligible for. So specifically, we looked at, is there any duplication? Is there any place where the city is doing something and the township is doing something, and you could do away with one or the other? The answer to that really, in terms of the actual services that are being provided, is no. There's not duplication. And I believe that's intentional and perhaps a direct result of having the same governing body make policy choices for the city that makes policy choices for the township, because you've chosen not to duplicate the services that you're providing. So you have, there's not, because of that, the way the city is organized, there isn't a single department who could subsume the services that are provided by the townships very easily. Not to say you couldn't create duplicate departments in the city, but certainly the functions are already being provided by the township. But broadly speaking, there were a few opportunities that we identified to potentially improve your efficiency, or perhaps just the effectiveness to which the services are provided. And they relate to workforce training and emergency assistant partnerships, increase in back-office support from the city of Evanston as it relates to your administrative personnel for the township, to proactively market the services that you provide that are not compulsory and something that you're adding, trying to add value to your residents, and to further enhance the cooperation between the city and the township. So we talked about duplication. It's interesting, the duplication, that there isn't a duplication with the city, but there are state agencies and there are nonprofits within your community that certainly provide similar services. With respect to general agency, general assistance, there's a requirement that as part of that service, you provide job training and workforce development assistance. And this is done by the case managers in the township supervisor's office. They are case managers, they may or may not happen to have job skill training or workforce development training, and it just so happens that the Illinois Employment and Training Center, which is a state agency that's dedicated to doing this, operates out of the Evanston Public Library just down the street. They market themselves as a one-stop shop for those seeking employment and training. And so there could be an opportunity to contract with this state agency to provide that service. Similarly, you have two nonprofits in Evanston, Connections for the Homeless and Metropolitan Family Services, that provide emergency assistance to vulnerable residents. You provide a maximum of $1,500 per year for residents, and then provide some training. These organizations are set up to provide those very specific services and then get people into job training programs with the hopes of not having to repeat the required assistance year in and year out. So again, there's another opportunity to perhaps partner with a nonprofit that is providing specialized services, and there are two right here in Evanston. In terms of the vacant, there was a vacant position in the township supervisor's office, case manager, at the time of our work, and we wanted to look specifically because there's an opportunity there. Did that position need to be filled? And we looked at the, our benchmarking research about case management basically suggested to us that two caseworkers was appropriate. They basically maintain about 50 active cases per case manager. This is more than several of the townships who run in the neighborhood of 30 or 31 cases per manager, and Oak Park has 66 is their average per case manager. But they don't provide emergency assistance at all, so there is certainly a slightly higher level of service, again, that's being provided here in Evanston. So the savings possibilities really do come straight from the decision that you all made to locate the township offices here at your civic center complex. So there's two opportunities that we see. One is your finance department has some capacity to provide administrative accounting, IT payroll support to the township. And so this can generate savings. There's about a $30,000 contract that the township has for those services right now with an outside vendor that could be brought into the city of Evanston. It's pretty de minimis in terms of its impact on workload. And this reduces the body of work for the accounts manager position that exists in the township. So there's a position that we feel could be eliminated once the township offices move here and the city is able to take over those services. I mentioned the marketing for your taxpayer advocacy and support services. It's really interesting, about 700 people take advantage of the taxpayer advocacy services that you provide every year. There's virtually no publicly available information or marketing about that service. There's no web presence, there's no direct mail campaigns, there's just not a lot of word about that. So word of mouth is how people find out about it, and perhaps some annual cycle that might come, but it's not a steady presence. So improving the website is one way to get the word out. If you're going to provide a service that you don't have to provide, but you choose to do it, and you do it well, celebrate it and have people, and be encouraged to take advantage of those services. And finally, just to touch on governance, because it is such a unique situation to have this shared responsibility for governance between the same individuals who are elected to be on the city council or simultaneously elected to be township trustees. And so as you enter office, embrace that role. There's an opportunity, perhaps through the Alderman orientation, to have some time set aside and dedicated to township operations, as well as creating some regular cycle of communication, perhaps on a quarterly basis, where you meet jointly with your other elected officials in the role of the township board of trustees to discuss the policy issues and the administrative issues that they're facing. So with that, I will answer any questions that I can here this evening.
Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Ms. Novak, very much. I just, my one question, have you conducted management audits of other townships, such as Evanston's?
Not in Illinois. We've worked in townships in Pennsylvania and in Ohio, but not in Illinois.
And any reason for the reluctance of some of our other townships to provide information to you?
Yeah, I think it was, there's perhaps some backlash from the idea that it might be, that a township might be dissolved, and if somehow this study was associated with trying to dissolve the township government, they didn't want to be party to that or make our job any easier. And even though that wasn't what our job was about, but so we, the supervisor did make some calls, and we got almost everyone to cooperate.
All right, I'm glad for that, and it's political backlash, I suppose.
Yes.
Thank you.
So your advice to the new supervisor would be that the old supervisor's path was pretty well-thought-out?
It was definitely steady in terms of the services that were provided. It was consistent. There's certainly opportunities for partnership and contracting that should be explored, but in terms of the actual services being provided, they're doing it well.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Thank you very much for your report. My concern has always been the review and the vetting of clients. And I'm concerned, especially that we're missing a caseworker. I didn't know about that. How, what do you believe to be the quality of that vetting? We've ne, I don't think we've ever had this many clients in a very long time. Now, I know things, the economy's not so great, but the economy's been pretty bad in the past also. So that's a concern of mine. Also, I didn't think, I wasn't aware that we were now up to a maximum of $500 per client, which doesn't include full medical payment for, you know, any medication, doctor visits, glasses, dental work, et cetera. So that's a pretty good deal- So that's a pretty good deal for, if you're not working. Also, I have never, ever seen, and I didn't see you comment on this, I have never seen a report on who's, and I don't even mean a name, but client number six is working, performing, you know, the services that are required at this location or that location. I have no idea who's working where, or how much they work, or any of that. How many people are not eligible to be working and are, you know, receiving counseling? So I, as a trustee of the township, and I've heard the public criticize us when we ask questions, why don't they know that? Well, we don't know that because nobody will tell us. And so I'm asking you, did you find out any of this information? Or were you just told that people are working?
Well, we've got some general information in terms of kind of the challenges that they face in putting people to work who might need other types of counseling services, so there's a challenging clientele at times that they're working with. We certainly felt like they were properly putting, vetting people in terms of providing assistance for those people who met the criteria. So I think they were doing their diligence in that regard.
Well, I'm not, I'm not challenging that everybody should be working. I'm just saying, I'd like to have some information about who is, who isn't.
I'm not going to be the one that's going to have that for you. That was not a question that we really explored specifically, so.
I think it's really important, especially that the trustees have that information.
And maybe if you set up those kind of quarterly dialogues, those are the types of issues that you can discuss in terms of understanding the operations of the township.
Maybe we can now, but certainly was never very productive in the past, so. As a trustee, I would like to have that information.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes.
I just wanted to say, the township will be on the agenda for the August 5th, I believe, August 5th, the Human Services Committee, is it the 5th? Human Services Committee, and certainly that is something that can be addressed. But I do want to say this, Alderman Rainey, that we do get reports like when people are in their 50/50 program, when they, you know, own the township and they get them working. So we do get that kind of information.
We get the numbers.
We get the numbers.
But we don't.
And we can get the places where they're working, so I know that information is available. In fact, we just had a discussion, Alderman Breathwaite, and I had that discussion with Mr. Gaspar last week. So we can ask for that. There's no reason why we can't get it.
Thank you. Alderman Breathwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for your report and the information. I do agree with Alderman Rainey. I was looking to understand a little bit more about the delivery of services. I mean, we're making these changes, I hope, with the understanding that it's going to help the township deliver better services. And I didn't really get anything from the report to help me understand just how effective they are in terms of delivering services. I understand the operational recommendations. Some make sense, some don't make sense to me. So maybe just to Alderman Holmes, your comment in terms of monthly reports, and I would say this to Supervisor Gaspar, if we could come up with a very simple survey to really start to get feedback from the clients. I mean, that's what I care about the most. How are they delivering services to the clients? So I don't know if it's within the scope of your work to do any follow-up, or if you can leave us with any recommendations, but I would appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Appreciate your report. City manager, do you want to motion to accept the report?
No.
No, all right. Good. That was clear. Alderman Rainey.
It'll be on the agenda for consent. It's been, we did that already, I believe, looking at.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we had Ms. Novak here this evening. We wanted to have her make the presentation. We are working on a full agenda for a future township board meeting. Many of those items will be before Human Services in a couple of weeks, so we'll deal with it then.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The consent agenda, first item is approval of the regular council minutes of July 8 and July 15. The Administration and Public Works Committee met this evening, and we ask you to approve the payroll through June 30 in the amount of $2,814,156. The city bills through July 23, $2,857,592. The committee requests the council approve a one-year contract extension with Badger Meter, Inc., for a water meter purchase contract in the amount of $20,000. Your approval is requested for a contract with F.E. Moran, Inc., for the 2013 HVAC Improvement Project, including the base bid plus alternate bid two in the amount of $489,300. Approval is also requested for a contract with TY Lin International.
Could you take that off the consent?
Yes, I will. A 3.3 is off the consent agenda. A 3.4, approval of a contract is requested with Schroeder &amp; Schroeder for the 2013 alley paving project in the amount of $497,596. Funding is provided by Special Assessment Fund and CDBG funds. A homeowner portion of this, of the cost is collected over a period of 10 years. Approval is also requested for, oh, Grandmother's Park is off the consent agenda, the request of an alderman. A 4, approval of an amendment to the agency agreement for the management of the natural gas purchase, and an amendment to the agreement for the purchase of natural gas for 16 owned city properties. We're asking that the manager be allowed to negotiate and execute Amendment 1, the agency agreement with Northwestern, going through August 31, 2015, and then negotiate and execute Amendment 5 to the agreement with Twin Eagle Resource Management, LLC, for the purchase of natural gas for 16 city-owned buildings when the strike price is below $5 per million BTU. The amended term of the agreement, the second one, would be effective September 1, 2015 through August 31, 2016. We ask your approval also of Resolution 46R13, authorizing the manager to execute a lease between the city of Evanston and Norma and Nolan Robinson for the apartment located at 1223 Simpson for the period August 1 through July 31, 2014, at the current rent level. We ask your approval for Ordinance 57013, amending Title 10, to regulate parking in electric vehicle charging stations. This is for introduction. Your approval is requested, and the Transportation Parking Committee and staff recommend council approve Ordinance 79013, which amends Title 10 to replace the existing cab stand at 1702 Sherman Avenue with a three-minute passenger loading zone. A new taxi cab stand is recommended for the 1600 block of Oak. This is for introduction. I'm going to ask that this be, the rules be suspended on the next item, so I will move that, and then the chairman can move approval. Ordinance 81013 amends Title 10 to create a resident-only parking district in the area bounded by Howard Street, the CTA yellow line tracks, both sides of Custer, and Ridge Avenue. This is for introduction tonight. I'm moving to suspend the rules on this item. Next is Ordinance 82013, which adds both sides of Heard Avenue and the south, from the south alley of Central Street to the north alley of Central Street as limited to hour parking between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. on any day except Sunday and national holidays. For introduction. Your request is, our request, we request you approve introduction of Ordinance 83013, which amends Section 325.1 and 325.6 regarding the real estate transfer tax, clarifying definitions of mortgagee and secured creditor. We ask your approval also to authorize the city manager to publicly offer for sale various vehicles and equipment owned by the city through public auction based on Ordinance 77013. The vehicles are presently out of service. We ask your approval also for the attached draft ordinance, number 84013, for the fiscal 2013 bond issuance in the not-to-exceed amount, is this off the agenda? No. In the amount of 12, 12,700,000, tentatively scheduled, the sales tentatively scheduled for July 31, 2013. Under planning and development.
Excuse me, City Clerk Green.
Sorry.
Alderman Rainey, you asked whether it's coming off the agenda. If you ask whether it comes off the agenda, it comes off the agenda. When you have the agenda, consent agenda, everything is already spoken that it will be agreed on with any, with no discussion or any addition words added to it. So it does come off the agenda.
Which one?
The one you just spoke of.
The obligation, on sale?
Yes.
Is that off the agenda?
Yes.
Why?
Because you asked whether it'd come off.
No, no, I asked.
You asked.
But I thought, I misunderstood whether or not it had been requested, but it is not requested. I'm going to insist it stay on the consent agenda. Next.
It's my objections.
That's up to you. Planning and development, we ask your approval, the committee met tonight, and we ask your approval of an application for home funds for a tenant-based rental assistance program by Connections for the Homeless. This is a $500,000 home grant to Connections for the Homeless for a 36-month tenant-based rental assistance program that will run from September 2013 through August of 2016. Next, your approval is requested for Resolution 44R13, which authorizes a termination and restatement of obligations regarding the Church Street Plaza development. Under P3 is going to be off the consent agenda based on a request of an alderman. The two items on, under Human Services are both off.
You want to pull P4, too.
I want to pull P4. Don't say it out loud. Oh, we're going, I think the chairman needs to deal with that. Okay?
You don't want to pass it through.
No, 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 I didn't read it. It's going to be addressed by the committee chair, P4. It's off the consent agenda. H1, Ordinance 43013, and Resolution 8R13 are both off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the Chair of Human Services, and Madam Mayor has not recommended any appointments. Therefore, Madam Mayor, I move the consent agenda.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Breathwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing. The consent agenda is passed. Alderman Rainey, could we have Administration and Public Works, please?
A 3.5, Madam Mayor, is approval of Grandmother Park Project. Resolution 36.
3.3, Alderman, I believe is the first one.
All right, well, you're right, right, sorry. A 3, approval of a contract with TY Lin International for the Evanston Bicycle Plan Update Project in the amount of $120,321.50. The funding is provided by Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, known as CMAP. A grant in the amount of $100,000 has been awarded, and the capital improvement fund in the amount of $20,000. I move approval.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Alderman Wilson.
And I'm not going to oppose this. I just wanted to make, I guess, two points. First of all, for $120,000, I hope it's conveyed to TY Lin International, that I expect a really incredible report. I would also like it specifically conveyed to them that it's my expectation that the report will contain what I'm going to call doable recommendations, as opposed to other reports we've recently received, which had recommendations for things that were completely not realistic. So I just want to make sure that they understand what our general parameters as far as, you know, availability of funds, et cetera, are, so we don't get a suggestion that we, you know, put in gold-plated bike lanes or anything like that, so. With those comments, I won't oppose the award of the contract.
Alderman Rainey.
But Madam Mayor, hasn't our staff already set forth the specifications for the study? Or are we just throwing it open to their wildest imaginations?
City Manager.
There was a response to an RFP that I don't believe is included in your packet. We'd be happy to come back and make a presentation once the consultant is on board to talk about the scope of work in more detail, if you'd like. Again, this is a plan that currently exists, so this is really an opportunity to refresh the plan. We will come back at a future, either Administration and Public Works or Human Services meeting with the consultants to walk through their scope of work and their outreach efforts. Would that be sufficient, Alderman Wilson, to do that soon?
I'm comfortable if the city staff just does what I suggested.
And Alderman and I have had a discussion about what his expectation is, and I understand that.
Thank you.
I cannot repeat that on television, but I understand it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the contract with TY Lin International for the Evanston Bicycle Plan Update Project. And City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Breathwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing. The contract is approved. Alderman Rainey.
Thank you. Next item is A 3.5, approval of Grandmother Park Project. Resolution 36R13 authorizes the manager to amend the agreement with Grandmother Park Initiative and Core Lands to allow for the construction of the new park at 1125 Dewey. I move approval.
Alderman Burrus.
Just stating my opposition again, that we're spending taxpayer dollars when initially the thought was that they would raise all private funds, so I am in opposition.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, it also involves our acceptance of their bitter nature's perspective.
Thank you. Alderman Breathwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be brief. I just want to quickly congratulate Grandmother Park for their fundraising efforts, to you and your board and your volunteers, as well as acknowledge the West Evanston Business Association for all their support for this project. I'd also like to, City Manager, thank the City Parks and Rec staff, as well as Marty Lyons, for all of his assistance in helping us to get to this point, as well as acknowledge the support of this Community Development Block Rank Committee for their support for this project. Over 300 individual donors raised over $93,000. The city's participation is about 20 percent, $55,000 from corporate and for-profit, another $50,000 from our non-for-profit community. And so, again, to those that are here, congratulations for a job well done. I think that the city of Evanston, we could learn a lot from this model in terms of moving forward in a public-private way to continue to build parks in our town. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Seeing no lights for further discussion, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Grandmother Park Project. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Breathwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Aye.
Eight to one.
Eight to one, the Grandmother Park Project is approved.
Ordinance 81013, Madam Mayor, I move action on this, this ordinance, which will create a resident-only parking district in the area, from 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., seven days a week, in the area north of Howard, east of Ridge, south of the Chicago CTA tracks, the yellow line tracks, and to, to Custer.
Okay, the rules have been suspended and it's been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance 81013 to create a resident-only parking district. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the ordinance passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey, and, all right, I always have to look this up, who's the head of Planning and Development? Thank you, Alderman Wynn.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have one item that's off and one, one item, P4, that I believe we would want to have withdrawn, if Corporation Council would agree with that. P4, never introduced, okay. P3 is Ordinance 86013 granting a planned development and special use at 1611 to 1629 Chicago Avenue, North Shore residents. This ordinance does not include a condition that requires the applicant to reserve at least 10 percent of all residential units in the project as affordable housing. I move introduction.
It's been moved and seconded, Alderman Holmes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really strongly feel that the 10 percent for, for affordable housing should be included, just based upon past practices, is also for need for certain segments of our community.
Thank you. I would like to speak to the issue since I brought it up. The residents, when I was at the North Shore Hotel, were very concerned about the new management, and what they were concerned about is an increase in fees and being unable to live there anymore. And I know that the new management is trying not to have that happen, but the fees have been increased, the rumor, and I can't sort out fact from, from rumor, and swear to this, is that 10 people have moved, and there's a lot of concern about the cost of staying in Evanston. Traditionally, that has been one of our places for lower-income senior citizens, and my hope was to preserve the spaces for the people who are there now, who otherwise will not be able to afford to stay. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the things we discussed at committee is whether it's possible to collect additional information about, really, an inventory of affordable housing for seniors and, and what is the landscape for affordable housing for seniors in Evanston, where would this fit in? And so I'd like us all to remain perhaps still open to the idea of a 10 percent set aside for this project, if we find with the additional information that it is warranted.
Alderman Rainey.
One of the things that will happen is if we require a 10 percent, then the price will go up for the others, and I don't believe there are any very wealthy people at the North Shore Hotel right now. So, I think we agreed that our staff would have a conversation and see what we could, you know, get out of them, but in terms of just a blanket 10 percent, I'm opposed to that.
Thank you, Alderman Tendem. Okay. All right, seeing no further lights on for discussion, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
No.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Eight to one.
Eight to one, the motion passes. All right, that can, P4, no, P4 was never introduced, so.
That concludes my report.
That concludes the report. Alderman Holmes, could we have Human Services, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance 43-0-13, lease and construction agreement for the city-owned property at 927 Noise Street with Piven Theater Workshop. Move approval.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance 43013. Alderman Tendem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the request of Piven Theater Workshop, we would like to table this ordinance.
Second.
Or date certain?
No, not, for, no date certain.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Speak up.
I'm supposed, I should embellish that a bit.
Thank you, Alderman Tendem.
We are tabling because the, mostly because of the construction, well, because the construction agreement really pertains to the existing proposal at, at Noise, and while we'd like to, Piven's certainly interested in keeping that in a tabled position, we want to proceed, really, in a positive direction toward a downtown theater building that would serve multiple theaters, and that Piven would play a very critical role in, in terms of making this the really outstanding, you know, regional, if not nationally-known, theater building. So that is why we are tabling it and will, you know, to put our emphasis and our expectations on something bigger for downtown.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite, a motion to table any matter is not debatable.
I, I was just encouraging Alderman Tendem to put a time period on it, that was, Madam Mayor.
All right, but we're not going to debate it, we're going to vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Resolution 8-R-13, amendment of the 2011 Piven Theater Workshop lease agreement, move approval.
City Manager.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, based on the move to table, I think would be appropriate to re-craft this as a one-year lease with no mention of any extended discussions, and we'll come back to you with a proposed fee for the year. I think it's appropriate that, for the work that the Piven Theater Workshop has done for the last two years, countless hours of professionals' time spent, that there should be some credit associated with that, so we'll work with them over the next couple of weeks, and we'll come back with a, a straight-up one-year lease for their existing space for 2013.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem.
Is it agreed that this will be for action or for actually its introduction on the August 20, or August 12 council meeting?
Yeah, it's a resolution, there's, there's no reason we wouldn't have it ready for August 12, then it would be just one night action.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes. We are at call of the wards. Oops, Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, I, it's just housekeeping, I'm not trying to be petty, but I think the second ordinance on the North Shore Hotel ought to be officially removed from the agenda because at some point in time, in 10 years, somebody's going to look at that and say, how did that just disappear? So I move to remove it from the agenda, even though it wasn't introduced.
Second. Been moved and seconded to remove it from the agenda, even though it wasn't introduced, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. And now we are at call of the wards. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My report is really just related, birthday greetings to Alderman Rainey, birthday was a month ago. Happy birthday to City Manager Bob Kowitz, two weeks ago, City Manager Bob Kowitz, his birthday was last week. Happy birthday to Alderman Braithwaite, who celebrated his birthday yesterday, and happy birthday to my colleague Colleen Burrus, who shares her birthday with me, which is today. So I wouldn't, I am glad to share my 50th birthday with all of you tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Happy birthday to all the Cancerians here, we're a great group. I want to announce, remind everybody, I know it's been announced many times, that Thursday, starting at 5:30, at Brummel Park, which is between Custer and Elmwood on Brummel, is the third annual, very, very popular food truck and concert event. And this year, we will have seven food trucks, several of which called up and demanded to be invited, so we're going to have everything from a curry food truck, to a cupcake food truck, to empanadas, to tacos, to tamale explosion, et cetera, and our very own hummingbird. So please come, the group that's playing is called Congregation, that'll start at 7:30. This has become very similar to Ravinia South, bring your pillows, bring your candles, bring your dog and your family, and we'll see you there.
Thank you.
And bring cash, got to have cash. The food trucks do not yet accept credit cards, as far as I know.
Thank you for that advice. Alderman Burrus. Thank you, Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues tonight for voting the way they did on the Harley Clark mansion. I know that people in the community worked very, very hard to bring their concerns to our attention, and I appreciate your listening to them. I have every, every faith in, that we will find a way to work together on this, and we'll end up with a project that is even better than the one that was proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Wynn.
No report.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
No report.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes.
Well, I would just like to invite everyone to Twiggs Park on August 8 for the South Boulevard Band, and if you want to hear some good music, come out, and I hope we're going to have eight, at least one food truck, Alderman Rainey, I'm not sure, but I did request that we have a food truck, so we'll see.
Good luck, I hope it happens. Alderman Tendem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My annual cautionary advice about West Nile virus, the City of Evanston has reported West Nile virus, and more recently, we've had three dead birds in the Sixth Ward, which is a pretty convincing sign that, that the West Nile virus is not active with adult mosquitoes carrying this virus. So please, in all of Evanston, Skokie Willmatt, this whole area is particularly cursed with this virus, and take every precaution you can, especially at, at the early hours of the evening, or dawn and dusk, when the mosquitoes are most active, and report any other sightings or, if you have a dead bird or something in your yard, please report it to our city's health department. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes.
I'm sorry, just to remind everyone that Tuesday, August 6, is National Night Out for all of us in our community, and those of you who may not have a place to go, please join us at Church and Dodge for National Night Out and a candlelight vigil for those who've lost their lives to violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor and Mr. City Attorney, there was an amendment to one of the purchases tonight, and I read the original amount, not the amended amount. This was on the HVAC Improvement Project by F.E. Moran. I, I stated that the purchase was $489,300, that is incorrect, it should have been $588,185.
I am sure we can rectify that mistake.
It's a few, few extra dollars. What should I do?
Alderman Holmes, what was the date of my day?
August 6.
Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, members of council, as this issue was reported out of committee.
Was, correctly.
And the recitation was made into the record, the appropriate amount will reflect in the contract amount. Everything's on the record.
Thank you, I'm really sorry.
Good catching.
All right, thank you, Alderman Rainey, anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
All in, I'll second it, all in favor, say aye.